At this time, we will call to order the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I would ask everyone to please bow your head for a moment of silent prayer and reflection. If you'll please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, could you please advise of any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We do have a few adjustments. The first, we have a new business item, which will be an update on the decision by the Department of Environmental Quality regarding coal ash. Under closed session, we removed the economic development closed session and added two closed sessions, one for property acquisition, which is relative to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5, and the other is personnel, which is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6. And just to let you know that Project Spool, which is the third public hearing that we have for tonight, that one is not ready. We're still waiting. We're working in tandem with the state, and the state is not ready, so that one will have to continue for the next meeting.
Okay. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as adjusted?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we have a very special opportunity to recognize a young man in our community, and I would ask Mr. David Souther and Misty Sherrill to please come up and tee this up for everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first of all, I would like to thank this Commission Board and county administration for allowing us to do the things that we do for the citizens of Iredell County. As y'all know, several topics that we do, or I guess areas that we do, is fire inspections, fire investigations, and fire education. We are fortunate to, I believe, be the only county agency that has a full-time fire education program. So, I mean, that's one good thing about, you know, our department and the staff that we have. For while we're here tonight, I'm going to turn the mic over to the staff member behind the madness. What she does, I couldn't do. She's in the classrooms every day. I don't know how she gets com-- don't get confused on what she says, because she repeats herself so much, so I'm going to turn the mic over to Misty Sherrill.
Thank you, guys, for letting me be here tonight. So, as you know, with our fourth grade fire education program, I visit all the fourth grade classes for about an hour per month of the school year. Through those lessons, we talk about things like how to stop drop and roll, and when to stop drop and roll. We talk about how to call 911, and how the 911 system works. But one of our big projects is the Edith Plan. Edith is exit drills in the home, so we talk about the importance of having a plan, practicing your plan, just like we do in public buildings, schools, and things like that. In that plan, we talk about knowing two ways out, filling doors to see if they're hot before we open them, and have a family meeting place, so that once you get out, we can find each other, and we know who's made it out safely. So, every year sometime between January and February, as I'm visiting the schools, I give the students an assignment. They are to go home with their families, share the information we've covered, and create an exit plan for their home, drawing a map of a floor plan, showing those two ways out, and choosing a meeting place. So, this year, I taught at Third Creek Elementary, gave that assignment. Just a few weeks later, we have one of our investigators go out to a fire. We discover that it is a fourth grade student, and the family shared with us that they had recently done just what they were asked to do. They created their plan, talked about it, hung it on the refrigerator, was waiting to take it back to be graded. I had not actually made it back to the school to check the plan, but they had hung it up, very proud, waiting for it to be graded, and tragically, a fire happened in their home that night. The family was able to get out, they knew what to do, everyone was prepared. And so, the plan really does help, it makes a difference. If nothing else, it brings awareness, it has that conversation, it's a good way to get the families talking about what would we do. So, that's why we're here tonight, to honor Gabriel and his hard work, and what he has done, to share his knowledge with his family in helping save their life.
Thank you, Misty. And the reason we wanted to bring Gabriel and his family here is that it's everyone's business to be prepared, and having a plan makes all the difference in the world between everyone being safe and tragedies that we read about all too frequently. So, we just want to encourage everyone that's listening out there in the community to be aware of the fact that our schoolchildren are taught very specific actions to take and interactions to have with authorities, and that if you haven't heard and haven't talked to your own children, you need to, because they've gotten information from the source that knows what they talk about. So, at this time, we'd like to invite up Gabriel Little and his family, his entire family, his parents, Michael and Hannah Little, and his two brothers, and Misty, and David, if you could come up, then we'll present this certificate. Everybody's kind of, we'll sit around this way. Gabriel, this is a certificate of recognition awarded to Gabriel Little, your official, by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, and there are all these fellows right behind you. For your commendable actions. So, this is for you, and I thank you for all you've done, for your family, and the example that you've given for the rest of our community. This is a celebration of life. This event happened just two weeks ago, but it's impassable in the extremes of a family that's lost their hope. Their homes are now living in a one-room hotel room with three active employees. Hope that the community will come up alongside and help in any way they can. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank y'all for coming. Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Good job, Gabriel.
And now, we'll move on to Item 6, which is an appointment before the Board. We've been looking forward to a presentation by Mr. Jim Marshall, who is the chairman of the Board of the Iredell Economic, Iredell County Economic Development Corporation, and he is going to update us on the process involved for the executive search to replace Rush Rogerson, who stepped into this newly-created position as a result of a merger of two separate economic development corporations, and for the last two and a half years, has not only managed that process, but also moved the ball forward tremendously in terms of our, the deliverables that we are looking for from our economic development community. And we've had more projects come across our dais than ever before, resulting in high-quality jobs, high-paying jobs, an increase in the tax base of Iredell County, which keeps our tax rates low, and it gives our families disposable income and a better quality of life. So, that's all, big, great circle, and it's all coming together, and Jim, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you for that introduction, Mr. Chairman, and fellow board members, thank you for having us, and you've made my presentation very easy tonight. You sit on our Board as well, and I want to thank the county and the Commissioners for their deep and broad support for our efforts as well. And you're right, this is the first year that we've had a combination of the Statesville and the Mooresville group together, and I must, I must say that I'm very pleased at the reception that we've received, that the broad support, and, you know, as we get calls and we fund calls daily, and a lot of them, we do what I think is a great job of listening to what the needs are of the corporation, and then try to find the right site for them. Sometimes, it's up here in Statesville area, it may be in the north part of the county, it may be in one of the business parks in the southern part of the county, but, but I think if you look at our history, we've done a very good job in the last year, year and a half, of really working together and placing the companies in the right areas, and strategically, they are just about evenly placed, I think. And so, a couple of weeks ago, Russ Rogerson, the president of the EDC, came in my office and said that he needed to resign, and that his parents are elderly, and that he had an opportunity to move back to West Virginia, where he's from. And I, we've got to respect that, moving back near his family, and so, with that said, we met early on and formed a mini-committee among the Board that I think has broad support among the county, the cities, private sector, you name it, and tried to get a broad section of support that we, that we have. And we interviewed three different companies to help us with our, with our search for a new president. And we selected Sanford-Holzhouser firm out of Raleigh, and they have extensive experience in economic development and placement of executives within the economic development arena. And Crystal Geddes, who is here with us today, is going to be leading that search for us, and she's going to be here in the county, working at least a couple of days a week during that interim process. And we estimate that it may take 90 days or so to find the proper candidate. We're going to look inside the firm, we're going to look outside, and see who raises their hand, and look at their qualifications, and find what we think is the very best leader to lead us and continue the same momentum that we have enjoyed for the last several years that Russ was here, I guess, three and a half years now. So, with that said, I've got Crystal here. If, if, Crystal, would you like to say another word? I think we've got just another minute or so, and to further introduce--
You're not under any time constraints.
Okay, all right. I didn't, I thought maybe we had three minutes. Do anybody have any questions to me while I'm here? I want you to know that we have a sense of urgency, but at the same time, we're going to take our time and make sure that we have the right person, the right fit, the right culture for our county and what we're doing here. I think we have a really deep strength on the, on the team already. They know their jobs, they know what to do when these calls come in, they're staying in their lane, and they're going to keep the business going. Crystal's going to be here to just kind of help shape and manage and make sure we're doing what we need to be doing. She's got extensive experience in that field. We're not going to charge out there and do anything, you know, 100 miles an hour in one direction or other, but we're just going to keep doing what we're doing, and we hope to conclude this process within 90 days or so. So, Crystal.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. Again, I'm Crystal Geddes with Sanford-Holzhouser Economic Development Consulting out of Raleigh. Just want to thank everyone for this opportunity. We look forward to working with each and every one of you, and most likely, I'll be reaching out to each of you to talk to you a little bit about this process and the future growth of this organization, and again, we just thank you for the opportunity. And please feel free to call me with any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Crystal. Well, that's a perfect segue into Chris Younger's show, which is to kick off with some public hearings concerning two matters of economic development incentives, as well as a third that we will be continuing. So, at this time, Chris, we'll discuss the economic development incentive for Project G2.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. Thank you for allowing us to be before you tonight to present Project G. Iredell County Economic Development is proud to announce Project G's prospective plans to expand onto their existing under-construction spec building facility located in Troutman, North Carolina. They have started construction, the first phase of the building, which is 500,000 square feet. They plan to add an additional 500,000 square feet as Phase 2, resulting in a total of 1 million square foot facility, that is a spec building. This facility is mainly designed for a warehouse or distribution facility with several docks, high ceilings, lots of, and ample parking for large trucks. The project would anticipate generating additional $25 million in two new tax investment over the next two to three years. That's in addition to the already 25 million that is projected for the first phase. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we are requesting a tax grant back incentive be granted to Project G2 for up to $400,000 over a three-year period. On behalf of Iredell County Economic Development, I want to thank you for your time and answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Younger? Hearing none, I will open the public hearing. There does not appear to be anyone who has actually signed up to be heard regarding Project G2. I would inquire of anyone in the audience whether you would like to be heard. Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask if there are any more comments. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive up to $400,000 over a three-year period, based on the company's investment of $25 million and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days for Project G2.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Now, move on to Item 8, or 7.2, a public hearing for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Sport.
Thank you again. Iredell County Economic Development is proud to also announce Project Sport's potential plans to expand and update their existing manufacturing facility located in Statesville, North Carolina. They've been operating in Statesville for many years now, have grown substantially over the years. Details of the company and their manufacturing cannot be disclosed at this time, but we will disclose more information at a later date when we announce their name. That is due to some state incentives being processed right now that will be approved on April 18, and then they will also then announce the project, and we'll announce immediately after the name of the company to go along with this project. They plan to add additional machinery equipment to their facility and renovate many areas to accommodate additional production and workforce. Their new plan to take workforce from two other states, bring it here to Statesville, and make this their new headquarters, their new national headquarters. They will anticipate creating 82 new full-time positions and generate $3,631,374 in new tax investment over the next five years. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Program, we are requesting a tax grant back incentive be granted to Project Sport for five years totaling up to $63,000, which averages out to approximately $12,600 per year. On behalf of the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation, I thank you for letting us present Project Sport to you tonight and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Younger? Hearing none, I will then open the public hearing for Project Sport. There is no one signed up to be heard. I'd inquire if anyone would like to be heard in this matter. Hearing and seeing none, I will now close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion again, and this is to approve an economic incentive up to $63,000 over a five-year period, based on the company's investment of $3,631,374 and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days for Project Sport.
Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion?
I would just like to add that as much as I enjoy and love seeing new companies come to Iredell County, especially being a company of 63 years old in this county, love to see when companies that have been here and been given and doing are able to grow and expand, and that's what this is, and that makes me feel good, that you can be successful if you come to Iredell County.
That's the proof in the pudding. Any further discussion, comments? Is a motion on the floor? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Item 7.3 is a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Spool.
Yes, sir. We would, we would like to, we would like to request that this Project Spool, the consideration be tabled until the mid-month meeting, to prepare for some additional information that will be coming in regarding some state incentives that would apply to this project.
Since this has been advertised as an open hearing, I will go ahead and open the public hearing, and there's no one that's been signed up to be heard, I would inquire if anyone would like to be heard. Seeing and hearing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to continue this matter, to continue the public hearing, to hold it open until our next meeting. So, movement.
Sixteenth, at 7 o'clock.
April the 16th. So, movement, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Howe. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to be here tonight and approving these projects.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Appreciate all y'all doing, Chris.
At this time, we will move on to Item 7.4, which is a public hearing to consider a request from Andy Huffman of Anchor Management LLC to rezone approximately 42.65 acres along Taylorsville Highway from residential agricultural to light manufacturing, M1. And Mr. Todd Matthews, if you'll tee that up for everyone.
The request we have before us today is outlined in blue on the screen. It is currently zoned RA, requests us to go to light industrial, M1. The Horizon Plan does call for this area to be rural industrial, the properties in proximity to other intense commercial uses, and traffic impact should not exceed road capacity. The planning staff is recommending in favor of this request. The map on the screen now shows the 2030 Horizon Plan, shows this area in the rural industrial adjacent to an employment center, industrial flex office area. You can see the road frontage on the screen, Taylorsville Highway, and Alexander Railroad runs right along, parallel to the Taylorsville Highway. The property is currently vacant and wooded. It does share a shared common driveway with an existing house, and there's been recently four new subdivided lots that will all share that common driveway. In looking at the existing driveway that the property will use, looking back toward Statesville and Taylorsville Highway, property's on our left, looking across the road at some existing residential houses, and then looking toward Taylorsville, with the property being on our right. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Any questions of Todd?
Mr. Todd, there's no negative feedback to staff, just a couple of questions for clarity by people in the community.
Correct. We have not received any negative comments regarding this request.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments? At this time, I will open the public hearing, and we have three individuals who have signed up to be heard if they would so desire. First is Kevin Sifford. And if you'd like to be heard, you can, okay, and then Mr. Randy Woolard. Okay, and the applicant, Randy Huffman. Okay, I don't, well, we'll call you up if there's questions. So, I'll inquire as to if there's anyone else that would like to be heard that hasn't had an opportunity to sign up. Hearing or seeing none, I will close this public hearing and ask if there are any questions or further comments from the Commissioners. Hearing and seeing none, is there--
All I'd like to say is that I think that this would be a good business to a very competitive business environment in downtown Lowry, and I'm sure that residents there would welcome them with open arms, because I think it's just a matter of time before the railroad, and what we have out there develops on into more industrial.
Well, we appreciate y'all's stake in a claim. All right, so there is a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve in favor of the zoning map amendment, and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted 2030 Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest, and furthers the goals of the 2030 Horizon Plan, because it is contained within a rural industrial area, it is close proximity to other more intense commercial uses, and traffic impacts should not exceed road capacity.
Motion by Commissioner Howe. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, good luck, and go out and grow the tax base.
We'll be sure to send the Lowry Welcome Wagon out to see y'all. We'll be sure to send the Lowry Welcome Wagon out to see y'all.
It's kind of like a little Burke Dale in there, isn't it?
Yeah, it is, real close. Lot of mixed use, for sure.
Good to see you.
Okay. We'll now move on to item eight, which is administrative matters, which are appropriate for our consent agenda. These are typically technical issues that involve staff, and we dispose of those at a pre-agenda meeting at the five o'clock hour, which is in this room. It is televised, is open to the public. We encourage people to stop by and work up an appetite. Ms. Jones, if you could please summarize each of these matters.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item was a request from the Public Library for approval to apply for an edge technology grant from the State Library of North Carolina in the amount of $7,934 to purchase 75 play-away launchpads. There is no match required for this grant application. Second item is a request from the Iredell County Economic Development Corporation for approval of an amendment to the economic development agreement. And then the third item is a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on March the 19th, 2019.
Any further discussion on the consent agenda items? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Item nine, we have no announcements of any vacancies occurring on any boards or commissions this meeting. Item 10, we do have one appointment to the City of Statesville Board of Adjustment for ETJ Representation, and we have one applicant to fill Mr. Amon's position, Mr. Craig Morrow. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion to approve Mr. Craig Morrow.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. And we thank Mr. Morrow for his willingness to serve and Mr. Amon's lengthy service. I would inquire if there is any unfinished business. This is not a public comment period, that will be next meeting. Under item 13, new business, wanted to apprise the public of the recent decision by the Department of Environmental Quality, which orders Duke Energy to excavate all of the coal ash from the six remaining sites in North Carolina, that those proposed excavation plans are due to the Department of Environmental Quality for approval on August the 1st of 2019. I will go ahead and read from their press release, just so that the record is very clear and complete. Raleigh, April 1, 2019. Today, North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, ordered Duke Energy Progress LLC to excavate all remaining coal ash impoundments in North Carolina. After conducting a rigorous scientific review of Duke Energy's proposals for the Allen, Bellows, Cliffside Rogers, Marshall, Mayo, and Roxborough facilities, and conducting public listening sessions on impacted communities, DEQ has determined excavation of all six sites is the only closure option that meets the requirements of the Coal Ash Management Act to best protect public health. The coal ash must be disposed of in a lined landfill. They go on to say that DEQ rigorously reviewed the proposals, and the science points us clearly to excavation as the only way to protect public health and the environment, said DEQ Secretary Michael S. Regan. Today's action sends another clear message that protecting public health and natural resources is a top priority. Duke Energy must submit final excavation closure plans to DEQ by August 1, 2019. In those plans, Duke must propose where excavated coal ash will reside and estimate how long the process will take. By law, DEQ must reject any plan that does not protect public health and the environment. In terms of the timeline that lies before us, by August 1, 2019, Duke Energy is required to submit final closure plans consistent with the detailed requirements of the Coal Ash Management Act and based on the election made by DEQ on April 1, 2019, to excavate all remaining sites. Duke Energy will have the opportunity to propose benefication options, such as recycling, as well as full excavation in that proposal. The Coal Ash Management Act requires DEQ to review any closure plan for consistency with detailed requirements in KAMA and reject any proposed closure plan that DEQ finds does not meet those requirements. DEQ must find that a closure plan is protective of public health, safety, welfare, the environment, and natural resources before a plan can be approved. By October 1, 2019, within 60 days of the receipt of the proposed closure plan, DEQ will conduct a public meeting in the county or counties in which the site is located with at least 30-day prior notice of the meeting. By December 1, 2019, Duke Energy is required to submit corrective action plans for addressing groundwater contamination from the impoundment at all six sites. This process just didn't happen by DEQ alone arriving at these conclusions in a bubble. This is an example of what one citizen can do in this country to identify an issue and to further develop facts surrounding that issue, and Ms. Susan Wind from Mooresville did just that, whose daughter developed thyroid cancer, and a very unusual kind of cancer to have for a young person, and discovered that there were other instances of cancer throughout the area. And she started working as a citizen to raise awareness and raise money to be able to find out what might be behind what appeared to be an unusually high incidence of cancer. To be very clear, the issue of cancer and the issue of coal ash are separate issues. There is no direct causal relationship established, but we don't know what we don't know. And what we do know is that coal ash can't be helpful to any of us, and that there are a number of elements that are contained within coal ash, heavy metals and such, that when coal is burned and those are reduced to a higher concentration, that those elements can interact and can potentially contaminate the environment. And they can contaminate potentially by water, by air, or by soil. And that's a process of trying to understand what all that is about that we are engaged in right now. And I have to tell you that the citizens and the government at all levels within Iredell County have come together and worked as a team, from the town of Mooresville, to the Public Health Department of the county, to the citizens, to our county staff, to our very able legislative team, especially want to point out the highly effective engagement of Representative Fraley, and Senator Sawyer, and Representative Turner, all of whom have been engaged from the get-go in trying to answer questions that the public has had. We have more questions than we have answers. It will take time to develop those answers, but there is plenty of forward progress in that regard. Ms. Wind was able to engage Duke University to study these issues. They were... Have not yet issued a report, but they are close to issuing a report sometime this spring, we're told. We also were able, through our Public Health Department and our staff, to reach out and engage Virginia Tech, to be able to come down and test over 700 wells in Iredell County, not just in the southern end, but throughout the entire county, to determine if there are any kind of issues that people may have on individual wells. And we are awaiting those results. They should be presented, and understand, individuals who have their water tested, that's individual information that we are not going to be privy to. But we will have a sense of, you know, the big picture without being identifying individuals. And I believe that is scheduled for April, what?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. And that's going to be what time and where?
Seven o'clock, at the latest available time, at Moore's High School.
Okay.
Performing Arts Center.
Okay. At April 18th, seven o'clock, Mooresville High School Performing Arts Center, which is a very large-capacity auditorium. And those individuals that have their water tested will come, and they will be able to hear some explanations about what the findings are, what implications those have. Some people may have actually contamination that could come from the wells themselves, not the water so much as, just the construction of the wells and soil that is surrounding those wells. So after that, we'll have another public hearing, a public meeting, in May the 9th, I think it is.
Says the 9th.
May 9th.
Where some of the... There'll be a discussion of some of the structural fill that has been used primarily in the Mooresville area of coal ash on various places, to include on Dooley Road, which is near Lake Norman High School. So these are all processes by which are here, meetings in which we are developing additional information for the public and for us, so that at the end of the day, if there is a causation, or there appears to be a causation-type relationship between some kind of environmental contamination, then we can know what appropriate actions there are to take. But as I said before, we do not yet know what connection, if any, there is to any particular substance. Don't know specifically if it's airborne, waterborne, or resonant in the soil, but we are moving the ball forward. And I think now would be probably a good opportunity to take advantage of some of the internal expertise that exists on our board, because, you know, we all come to this dais with different backgrounds and experiences in our kit bag. And as it happens, I think that Commissioner McNeely has some insight based on what he studied at the great NC State, and also what he does for a living in terms of servicing our farming communities.
Well, we... Me and James had talked earlier, Chairman Mallory. The unique thing about this study, to a point, will... It will show us just exactly what the water quality is in different parts of the county. And I think we take our water, especially our wells, a lot for granted. We're very fortunate in Iredell County to have a very huge aquifer that we were able to tap and get our water from, and that's a blessing. Trust me, that is a blessing. But there are issues. And talking with Chairman Mallory about this situation and these heavy metals that are in this coal ash, we constantly, and I hate to compare humans to animals, but we are just one of many species on this face of this earth, and we constantly run into problems in the agricultural community on the production side of livestock, where water has brought about many problems. And I have sampled probably, oh gosh, I'd say over 100, 150 different waters, wells in Iredell County alone, and other counties too, just checking the water quality and finding different things. So this will be enlightening in many ways, but it'll also show us too, in my opinion, there are some metals that occur in our soil, but there's a lot of metals that don't. And I think we're going to find, in different parts of this county, this is a personal opinion, some metals that don't really belong there. So this will be interesting to see. But it's very critical to our health. What we ingest in water is so critical to our well-being and our health and how we regulate our body. You know, in the Boy Scouts, we have a saying, and you know, the rule of three, you can last three minutes without air, three days without water, and three weeks without food. Three days without water isn't very, very long, so we depend on it. And I know personally at my own house, talked about this, moved out there and dug a well, and I won't get into it too much, never had a kidney stone in my life till about a month there. Thought somebody stabbed me in my sleep. And next day, I was at a home improvement store and buying a whole-house water filter and putting it on my well, 420 foot, some of the best water I thought I'd ever tasted when I drank it there, when it first got tapped, and I thank the Lord for it. And now, once a month, I change this filter, and I've told... Chairman, I may bring it to a meeting, I've got one, I've kept, and that great water that I tasted and thought was so good, 400 and some foot deep, it's amazing what I collect on this water filter, amazing. And so, just goes to show you that there are concerns, and maybe we're being contaminated, maybe we have our own issues, but it's going to be a good ground base for us to know what is out there. That, if nothing else, we get from this test, we can at least make some assumptions from it far as our health. And I think that's really important for our Iredell County Health Department, to have this as a baseline going forward, to understand how water plays in our health and in our lives. So with that being said, I'll quit talking and using up air, but I'm looking forward and intrigued to digging into this and just seeing where these samples take us.
And I guess the moral of that story is, if you're on a well, you may want to consider a filter.
Get a filter.
Because they can literally filter out 99.9% of anything harmful out there. And, you know, like we said, you don't know what you don't know. You may be drinking some things and just not know it. And now, because of public awareness, I think it behooves all of us to better safe than sorry, to be the attitude. And I would personally like to thank Vice Chairman Bowles, who has been the lead on our Public Health Task Force, that's not only been dealing with the opioid issue, but this landed fairly square in his lap relative to, in his wheelhouse, working with the Public Health Department and Brady Freeman and Jane Henson. They've just done all a great job in terms of providing the public engagement and the facts that people need, so that they have all the facts to make a decision, and that they don't start turning to rumor. We've been absolutely transparent and pushed out information as soon as we've gotten it so that people can act accordingly. And I do want to also personally thank Susan Robertson, who has really, from our staff perspective, been able to manage this whole process of getting all the different parties together and coordinating that, and also keeping an extraordinary timeline and documentation of everything that has gone on. So, but we have miles to go before we sleep. And so, any further comments? And I do want to... All the commissioners have been involved at various points along this journey in meetings, and... various points along this, uh, journey in meetings, and, um, and, uh, the public meeting for the general public, I know that, uh, the public meeting that was held, uh, in Cataba County, uh, for the, uh, by Duke Energy, or actually by DEQ. When they initially were considering and had been recommending simply capping the coal ash that was there and not moving it, just capping it, not doing anything about the, uh, uh, subterranean side of that coal ash pit that, uh, potentially is interacting with the water table, uh, that, uh, what looked like just sort of, uh, an assumption of what the result was gonna be, that, that lots of people turned out, are very passionate about, uh, their concerns and communicated those with no uncertain, uh, and no uncertain clarity, and, um, I think that had an impact. And I think that this board had an impact by passing unanimously a resolution that we added to the public comment period, uh, because, uh, there were some folks that weren't very happy about that, uh, but that's what you do. Okay.
It also kept me from having to go there and throw in a gallon of cow poop in that to get it moved, so it saved me that trouble. I appreciate that.
All right. Um, on that note, uh, we'll move on to the county managers.
I have a couple of things. I, I just wanted, again, publicly, uh, applaud the relentless efforts of Susan Wind to, um, bird dog this and stay on this. Unfortunately, her family has been affected, and I thank any of the people that may be affected, we need to keep those people in our prayers and, and remember that's what it's all about. And I'd like to thank our staff also, and, and our goals in this whole thing is to protect our citizens, you know, then we talk about that in our meetings. And I think DEQ doing this, you know, and I'll, and I'll reiterate what you said, there's no direct connection proven yet that there is a connection between coal ash and these cancer clusters, but I'm glad to see DEQ err on the side of caution to ask them to remove these coal ash, uh, sites throughout the state, um, on a proactive measure, and I hope Duke Energy is able to do that in a timely manner. But I just wanted to also say that, you know, uh, our legislative team has been tremendous.
Yes.
And Senator Sawyer, uh, we need to recognize the fact that she's trying to get a bill passed that would, uh, create a study to be done on these type of cancer clusters. So hopefully some good will come out of that if it gets passed. So I do wanna thank everybody for their work on it, and especially, uh, Ms. Wind and the, our colleagues in the legislature in Mooresville also.
Thank you, Commissioner Howe. All right, uh, Ms. Jones, County Managers' Report.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. My report is very brief. Just a reminder that the Jennings Park groundbreaking, which will be for our new ropes course that will be locating there at the Jennings Park site, will be Friday the fifth at ten o'clock, and we will do that rain or shine. I know that we have two commissioners that will be headed out of town, but I'm just a reminder to the, to the rest of the board and the public as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Uh, we'll now move on to, uh, some issues that, uh, we discussed in our closed session. Uh, we discussed personnel issue, uh, there are no action items to, uh, report out on that officially, the, and then we discussed, uh, an issue relative to property acquisition, and I'd ask if there's a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve the purchase of property located at forty-six hundred Harmony Highway for a purchase price not to exceed forty thousand dollars, and authorize the county, county manager to execute a contract and closing documents.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimously. Now, don't, don't everybody jump at once. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A move.
Ah, okay.
Got it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We are adjourned. Mr. [inaudible].[1754.65]